Yes, I can hear you.
Thanks darling.
Okay. How are you? Hope everyone's well.
I'm well, how are you?
Good. I'll be quiet now.
If you guys aren't muted, please mute yourselves.
For some reason it's not.
I wasn't very happy.
Like, I really don't know how to do this.
Hi, everyone online. Our chairman hasn't showed up and I'm not sure why, but that's okay, but Judy's here.
And we have a forum.
And we have a forum, so we're gonna get started in a few minutes.
I just, I just wanna connect up with the meeting and then I'll be ready to go.
So we'll be with you guys in a minute or two.
Someday I will be able to remember a six-digit number and I will know that I'm headed for the front yard.
Will you call me and I'll tell you. You did.
Okay. Calling the meeting to order, we have a forum. And today is March 2nd, 2023. We are having a regular hybrid meeting at the Como Building and via Zoom of the Planning Board Town of Woodstock. Motion to approve the minutes of February 16th.
Promotion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks John.
Communications and announcements. What do you have Melissa?
There's no, there's no updates to the agenda. And if I can, just communications announcements is everything that you guys received and just because Judy hasn't done it, I can go through it.
So we've had a comment from Brad Will about guest accommodations in the Hamlet. We've had an email from the organization called Preserve Woodstock Stop the Calmar Lane Motel. And we had an email from the WEC regarding upcoming meetings and we were invited to the February 27th, which has now passed.
I attended that last night. We received a February 27th, but the first one was last night. They had a great, Tim Hott was there with the streams. It was, it was good. They're gonna have another one. It did offer you guys continuing ad credit. So if you wanna hop on, it's an evening. A lot of times they're not in the evening and if you're working, it's hard to go. So I try, when I see things like that, give you an opportunity to get continuing credit.
But compared to having to drive out to Millbrook or anyplace else.
Yeah, and they, they were Zoom capable, like I did it from home, come back in. Not that I need the credits, but I watched it because I watched. I will let you know.
Can we still do the one from last night as a record?
Sure, I will get that for you when you can. Yes. It's been an hour.
Yeah, I might be interested. That was a work courses one.
Yeah, our recordings kinda suck, but it was good. But Tim might have, I can reach out to Tim. Like even the PDFs would be, he had some great ones.
I heard it was really good. And then we're kind of on the forefront of in the way we design our bridges to protect the water.
Yes. Well, I think we have more buffer law.
When I first started, we do without a doubt, without a doubt.
Although I discovered that the work that my intern did last summer has some gaps. So I, I'm gonna have to get back in touch with Bassar and see if I can get another intern to fill the gaps.
When I first started, I went to Phoenisha, like it's a 10-day, it's a municipal day is what they call it. I don't know. You guys might remember, but Judy and things. And I literally gave you guys information to like read over and then give me back information, answer questions and then give you continuing credit. Too, but it was super cool because it was all about Irene and, and all the work that they were doing and a project that's going on there for like the next 30 years. And how to prevent what happened before to happen again. It was, it was good.
Now, there was something about that meeting about flood maps. And I want people to know that I have the data from FEMA. They don't call it a 100-year flood plain anymore. They call it a 1% flood plain and there's also a 5%, a .5%.
And anything DC, anything estuary, H, H, N, R, R, R. There's such quality, like these people's passion is nature and streams and tributaries, like you can go on and on and on. But you get so much out of the hour that you listen.
Anything that Ingrid.
I watched one today at home. Yeah.
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 Cool.
So they're, they're always real good. I can usually steer you in the right direction.
So at 6:05 and we're now a little bit late. We need a motion to open the public hearing onto the RS Equities Trust and the Asava Betsy Stein Planning Board Number 230995B as in boy. May I hear a motion to open the public hearing? All favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so is anyone here from the public regarding the Stang subdivision?
Yes.
Would you like to, we usually have people come up here, don't we?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and say what you have to say?
Um, sure. I don't have much to say. I was more here to listen.
It's all up to you. Do you wanna speak?
If you wanna say anything, right.
If you did, I'd ask you to come up just so you were on the microphone.
Okay, yeah.
We welcome you anytime.
Be aware that there was a mistake in the mailing and so we are going to recess this motion to the discretion of the chair and expect to bring it back again.
On the 16th.
On the 16th.
I had a question.
So we don't, you know, it's not done today.
Okay, sure.
I do have the files if anybody needs to see them either.
Is there anyone online on Zoom that would like to say anything in regards to the Robert Stang? Now's the time.
Yes, I have a question.
Hey, Mr. Manotti. Hello, it's Melissa.
Hi, good evening. I'm Thomas Manotti. I'm the attorney for Hope Warren LLC. The property immediately to the south of the proposed subdivision. I just have a question. If this subdivision is approved, where is their access gonna be?
I'm gonna bring up the.
He, Robert Stang is on and so is, I believe, all his people and they can answer you directly, Mr. Manotti.
Okay.
I'll take it off. Robert, Patty?
Hi, this is Robert. I, I, there are two ways to access the parcel. One is on the there's a, there's a deeded right-of-way from Joannette Lane to the one-acre parcel. And the five acres that's being joined to it has frontage on Joannette Lane.
Okay, because I, I understand there's a right-of-way in off of Joannette Lane to the one-acre parcel. But they would not be able to piggyback that easement onto any other property. Only applies to that one-acre parcel. So if the subdivision does go through, that right-of-way would no longer exist for that parcel.
Andy, or I guess Patty, Andy Zwieben on here, I think that, that, I don't know the realities.
Piggybacking's not allowed.
Andy, you're muted, right? If you're talking, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks.
I am the petitioner's or the applicant's attorney. And as Mr. Stang indicated, the property, the five acres that we're seeking to connect with the one acre to form those, the parcel, has access on Joannette Lane. I don't necessarily agree with you, Mr. Manotti, with all due respect, that the other right-of-way disappears. It's still deeded and remains there, but it's the larger parcel, but the larger parcel does have direct access on Joannette Lane.
No, the, the easement would still be in effect for that one acre parcel. But it would be trespassing for anybody else using it. And that includes the five acres that would be merged with that. You can't expand the easement to more property afterwards.
The, the question I think is more correctly put is if we went to the one acre, we could certainly go then to any other property adjoining the one acre.
No, you can't.
Well, I've tried that case and wanted, so I'm, you know, I'm just. I'll be happy to agree to disagree with you, but the primary access is going to be on Joannette.
Mr. Manotti and Mr. Zwieben, I, I just, Mr. Stang is here for a lot line revision. He is, he has proved access. He has done everything due diligence. It is not a subdivision. It is a lot line revision. Answered our questions for access. So if you guys wanna further pursue this as a civil matter in court, that is solely your right, but is not a planning board.
I have the December 22.
I'm sorry to be so direct, but as I'm sure you're aware, right-of-ways and easements are not town purview.
I couldn't hear you. They're not what?
Town purview.
I still couldn't hear you.
Town purview.
Okay.
And civil.
Well, you, you would have to make sure there's access before you can grant any.
And, and we did that to the extent that our authority goes. And if there is any legal issue, that is between the parties.
I understand. No, I understand the remedies that we have aren't, don't lie with you. They would lie with bringing in action.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, everybody's always welcome at our public hearings and this is, you know, why, obviously. Anybody else have any concerns?
Hearing none. We need a motion to recess the public hearing to the discretion of the chair.
Do you guys have anything?
Surprised it got so aggressive. Little thrown off by Mr. Stang's attorney. It's an interesting conversation as far as the easement extension goes and I'll be curious to see what comes of that. If that's something they decided to resolve. You know, other than that, as of now, I don't really.
We have a couple of weeks to that.
Yeah, next meeting it's open again. We will reopen it and if you have.
Do the same thing.
Yeah, you can talk to other people between now and then.
We don't normally carry hearings over, but under the circumstances, because of the public notice, we have to do that.
Fair enough. Great, thank you.
All right, James, second?
Second.
On favor? Okay, so, so just deciding and we will reopen at the next meeting.
Yes. Guys, we're, we'll do this again, March 16th. Again, I apologize for my clerical error. Seems, if anybody needs any other, anything, please don't hesitate to contact me in the planning board office.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Next item is unfinished business. Melissa, do you have anything?
I, I do. I just wanted to go through, we, we have a ton of cases. We have a ton of cases that are in the window, so I figured it'd just be a good time to just go through everything.
Good idea.
Peter's okay? This is very out of character.
Yes, it is.
Um, okay, so we had meet Mountain Road was an addition on the house. I had been, Brian went, but wasn't sure if he went to the right house. It's funny how that happens to us so often. Um, I received some minor updates to the maps. If you wanna call my office, we can talk.
Okay.
All right, 679-2113, extension 16.
Extension 16.
Okay, you're welcome. So I have to look at them more closely, but the owner of the house actually brought me in a piece of wood and the color paint of his houses so it'll match. So he's good matches. So I'm gonna see what I got and see if we can bring him back.
Are you saying it still needs a site visit though? Because.
No, no, we just. This was Mr. Norris's plans.
Yes, that we reviewed like three, three weeks ago, yes.
It's Peter. So we want them to look what we want them to look like. Okay, California.
As possible as possible.
And we want, and it is because it's an addition, like it, but there's certain things we need and he has to.
This is one of the rhododendron or something covering.
Yes!
Well, you know, we never did settle that question of the fact that if you've got something set back 30 feet, it's really not the same frontage.
Yeah.
And to show an elevation that makes it look like the same frontage is kind of.
Yes.
Yes, you're looking for a term from me. I don't know what that is. It's just like architectural elevations appear flat. You don't feel depth, so it's not.
But I called him on it at the time and he knows that I'm right and we can make our decision based on that.
And he has done some work on his equations and his reflective and he did just send me reflective glass spec sheets, which is a first.
Good.
So I, I just haven't had five minutes to look at what he sent. So, all right, so California quarry, as Peter said, we're going for Waldo. We will do the balloon site visit. We will do, we're gonna go back up. Welcome chairman. So, right now. Right now, we are waiting for them to stake out the site. Unfortunately, they didn't listen to us very well. And we went up and did some site visits and it wasn't staked out because they kind of argued with me if we remember at the meeting saying it didn't need to be because it was obvious. Well, if I wanna ask WEC to go up and I want all of us to go up, it needs to be staked out. So he needs to redo the drone photos and do a bunch of other stuff. Talking about California quarry.
Yeah.
And then Rod Corales will be back the next meeting. He had the maps redone. I looked quickly. It looks like he got us what we wanted. He did not redil any, but it looks like he fit it all into the envelopes. But we, you guys will check that next week.
I'm sorry, who's it?
Corales.
Okay.
The subdivision, right, right. I know, this is, yes. Arminstein, Calmarlene, Nan is reviewing now. I'm super excited to work with her and get her. So we're gonna do what, exactly what we did with Matt. We're gonna bring her in, bring them in. She'll go over her memo with us. I will invite John, but that's at his discretion. He's already done quite a bit just reviewing everything and kind of been like a go-to. John lines.
Online, sorry.
He's our legal attorney who we use escrow for. But Nan has been back and forth, talked to me, communicated, so I expect that soon. And the lawyer meeting that we might do with John, just with us, attorney-client privilege, might be not a meeting night. It might be a rainy night of the week, but we'll figure that out based on John's schedule. How and Steve were the case that came to us with the violation. Right, that they, yes, that they had no idea what was gonna happen. So Lori is going this weekend. And they are gonna discuss everything on Sunday. As you know, we all love Lori. She asked me. She asked me if I could get them back on the March 16th meeting, so we'll have a little hectic meeting. But she wants them to be able to plant as soon as possible.
Sure.
So my question for you guys, yes, is would you like me to have a resolution ready to say that they're gonna amend the resolution, amend the violation? And this is how they're doing it, because if they've met and they did it.
Might as well. Might as well, we can.
And I'll just say, you know, like this is erected, we're not gonna do a pub, I mean, I don't, we don't always do a public hearing for remedy anyway. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with that. So yes, I will do that. 11:05, Route 28 is back.
I'll say a few words about that.
Is that the gas station?
Yes. All right, hang on. You could, let me just finish my speed. Medenbach and Eggers is now on it, which we love. Matt Rudikoff is involved. I acquired more escrow and I, this week submitted the recent submission. It's just a plan. Yeah, but they will all be back.
Okay, about the gas station, just so you guys get a little history on this. Back in the day, you know what we're talking about.
Yes.
And by Basin Road. Well, back in the day, Rudy Baumgartner ran that place. He was a local guy and he was, he was the judge for town. And that little piece of property happens to be Woodstock. Well, that gas station had one pump. 28 was a two-lane road. There was no traffic light. There was no Stewart's.
Oh my.
And I traveled that every day sometimes.
I think I had a cigarette there when I was 16.
It's half a century ago. That was a one, one gas pump, gas station. I traveled that route three, four times a day and I've seen several accidents right there. And what the problem is that you're coming down a hill on Route 28 and it's a light. The light's green, tractor trailers, everybody else puts the pedal to the metal, go down the hill. Well, sometimes Stewart's gets jammed up. And people were lined up on Zena Road to get into Stewart's, backed all the way up at 28. So you got people waiting on 28. They can't get in and people coming down.
And stores never.
They run that light every single.
Yeah. Stewart's shouldn't even have the exit down 28. They should only have one. But anyways. The issue is that we, they've been before three times. And each time they, we keep sending them back because the site plan. And the major disagreement is entrance and exit off of 28. There's a light, so you can go in the Basin Road and come out with a light. But of course, they don't want that. They want to get in and out.
There's also the bridge back on that road too. That they can't, that has a certain clearance and the trucks can't get in that way.
Yeah.
So my point to me is, our main mission is health, safety and welfare. And of all the cases we've had before us in the last years, I've never seen one that is more on that issue of health, safety and welfare. And you're talking about tanker trucks full of gasoline coming in and out of there. The, the real problem is that you know, they're saying, well, it was a gas station. Yeah. That station was, was tiny. And you're talking about something bigger than Stewart's. So you can imagine the traffic that would create. Here's my issue to you guys. If that goes through, whether it's this applicant or any applicant, what's, what they are talking about there. There's gonna be an accident. God forbid someone dies. Let me tell you. When the accident happens, everybody's gonna say, well, what did the Woodstock planning board think about when they let that happen? And the second issue is, and I'm not a lawyer. But if someone does get injured or killed there, you're gonna come after us personally. So I've told, I've told everybody, I'm dead against wants to be a bicycle shop. Whatever you wanna do there is great, but I think we're talking more pumps than even at Stewart's.
And it's a small piece of property.
Tiny, tiny, tiny.
Sloped steeply in the back.
And the drainage has always been a problem. The issue now is, two issues. We sent it to the county for eight-way meeting, the county to make their suggestions. Well, it's a new application now, so it should go back to the county. But we also sent it to the DOT, to the state highway department. They said, okay. It's in the town of Woodstock, that little tiny thing. My position is, I think the town of Woodstock should challenge the DOT on that decision. I mean, we'd have to get town board to, to make, if we get that. But I'm just trying to explain to you guys, it is, I, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. That kind of a development goes in there.
I think your time is gonna put's gone out right now. It's like, you know.
It's great.
Seriously, last thing we need.
This is a big part of my district.
Flying down the hill.
If you could imagine people coming in and out, it's just.
Also, it should be a scenic byway. Shouldn't we endeavor to not have development on 28? I know it's a bit quite late, but because we drive through lights to get home, you know. I don't really think we need another gas station on that.
I think the state is definitely in the wrong on 28. All up and down, all those entrances on and off. It's just ridiculous, you know, it's.
Always talk and interrupt us. I think you're unmuted. I think you're good.
I'm not muted.
You're fine. You're good.
No, I just wanna reinforce Peter's argument. I also have traveled that road for a very long time. And there is no way that I can see any applicant applying for that multiple pump gas station. It's just insane. And I think it's just, and I concur with Peter, I think we're inviting major tragedy and lawsuits.
I agree.
I agree, John. I have a challenge to DOT, I think.
So the question is, how do we get the town board to stand? How would they go about challenging it?
So I think we're headed there, I think. So we have to entertain this and I think it's really good that we're using Matt because he's been on this case forever. So I think Matt's really gonna be your go-to. Like I, I mean, I stressed to him that like, I'm glad that he's on this with us because he was at eight-way meeting and Tom went to the eight-way meeting. And we will prepare a memo with all of our reasons to the town board and supervisor McKenna with all of this, but let's get this in. Let's have Matt present. And then I think we go there. What do you think?
And I think we ought to expedite it because election time is coming.
Well, hopefully, I told Matt that I wanted it back by May, okay? So I gave Matt a good, a good chunk of time. And I said, ideally, I'd like them back in May because I try to be efficient. So I'm hoping for them back in May, so we should be good. All right.
Good.
And, all right, so.
This is where it gets interesting. You know these.
Talk about lawsuits. So if DOT said, oh yeah, it's fine, wouldn't they also be liable as well? I mean, that's obviously like, if it, if the challenge didn't go as.
Well, I think we are probably insured by the town. They're acting within our role as.
Absolutely.
Officials and so is DOT.
We had, we had other cases. Yeah.
Your voluntary job is not gonna.
I got a certain papers by first week.
We don't wanna have to go to court.
Peter's number one point is, you guys aren't really responsible for the health, health, welfare and safety of the community.
Yes.
And that's his concern. And he wants you guys to know that that's what he's.
And I'm also concerned about liability. We've been sued once over, over stainless steel roof.
Took forever. I'm sure it's in appeals again, right?
I don't wanna be served for wrongful theft, I can tell you that.
So.
It's a no benefit to Woodstock, whether it's a gas station here or not. They're not short of gas.
Can can the board simply pass a resolution and forward that as of tonight to the town board? And if the town board wants to discuss this, I think that some of us would show up the town board to pose our position.
John, how about I draft a resolution up for approval at the next meeting? It's just that we're concerned. This case has been in front of us. Here's our reasons, everything I've heard from you, and I will just put it right in and I will do it as a general and board resolution.
We're normally not taking comments online, but Uranus asks whether it's across from Stewart's. Yes.
Yeah.
Kenny, come on.
Is there. Is there an active application for anything at that corner right now?
Them.
Yeah.
It's gas station.
I mean, it's been in sketch plans for years and years and years.
And he came back within the past year. I mean, and that's usually the cutoff is within a year. And we did see, they came back within a year. We, you guys said, nope, not from 28. So, yeah.
I mean, like in any case, we have, each guy, you know, the seven of us, seven votes. And the first vote is on accepting the site plan or the application. Accept the site plan, as long as it goes on and off 28, I can't see the.
Right.
Right. And then the second vote is whether we, you know, accept the resolution. But we vote first on whether we accept the site plan.
In its current form, whatever that is. I guess it's what it. In its current form, whatever that is. I guess it's what it was the last time, right?
Built a bridge to access to another.
It's a little more simple, but, uh, yeah. All right, so we did agree with Stang. We'll open it up and do it all over again, um, next week.
But Stang has, uh, access to Wittenberg Road, so why, why do they need you?
A long history of that easement, easement right of way. And I'm just gonna say what I've said all along. These right of ways are needed, they're civil, it's lawyers. It's not anything any of us want.
And it's on their deed. They have a right to do it.
And for a subdivision, you have to prove access. Technically, a lot line revision is a subdivision. This is a lot line revision between two parcels that they all. If Peter tells me he has two parcels and he, oops, he put a shed in between and he wants to put, I'm making this up as I go along, cause I'm sure it's breaking zoning somewhere, but he wants to put a bathroom in one, okay? He wants to make it a studio, oh, no. See now, look, what I'm talking about, an accessory building here. But it's on a lot, so he wants to come to me and he wants to switch it by point five. They are both his lots. And he's gonna make one, one parcel more compliant with zoning because we're doing.
And the other parcel is compliant.
I know that. I know the hunting cabin up there. I've been there because Mr. Basigliel got so stuck in his truck one time. I had to jack the whole truck up and put chains on it to get it out of there. So that's how bad that road is. And speaking of narrow roads that we were talking about, one of California quarry, I was up on one of those roads today. Single dirt road. And then my truck was surveying and sure enough, a Verizon truck tries to come down. In the snow, I couldn't back down and he couldn't back up.
And that's why you were late.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
Oh, we went, beautiful day. I picked the weather perfectly.
And we couldn't get up there.
It was with the leaf and we had to come back and get the truck and we still spun in the truck.
Nice young woman to come back once the house, are you literally driving down that road every time?
Yeah, and they say they're gonna go there in the winter.
Maybe it's a helicopter.
Yeah.
They don't have any place to put a helicopter pad.
On the roof.
If they build the house the right way, maybe.
You have a fire truck trying to get up a road like that and the ambulance trying to get down.
That's, that's the semi-driver who's on that.
Yeah.
So next, we have March sixteenth meeting and then the next meeting is March thirtieth. It's a workshop meeting, so new, new members. Um, we try to give you guys training anyhow. So we have a fifth Thursday of the month.
For what you get credit?
For what you get credit.
And why do we need credit?
Because you're required to continue in.
Certain amount of hours.
Four hours a year.
Four hours?
Most usually tries to, over the course of the year, provide these.
Yeah, and now that, now that it's almost all on Zoom, you don't have to drive an hour and a half to get to the place and sit around and drink bad coffee. So it's.
What we used to do years ago was we, the entire planning board would go to New York City and stay at the Hilton.
But now we don't have a.
But I used to have a helper, which is, you know.
Yeah.
I have a helper.
I want you all to know, for me to go away in April, I applied for a scholarship, the case for everything. I don't have to ask for anything. But anyway, but that's the only reason.
Well, I have to ask you a question then. I'm planning to go to Iceland in September. Is there anything that I can do research on, like geothermal?
Bridges.
Oh, I mean, for sure. Seriously, I'm interested in seeing what they're doing with geothermal. But there's a disabled tour going.
That's very cool.
I wanna go to Iceland and hopefully the weather cooperate and I'll see the unoros. But I like geology.
We can meet for coffee.
Airline in Stewart's that goes.
Oh, for sure. That's exactly how I wanna go. It's six hundred and fifteen dollars from Stewart's if I buy the ticket, as opposed to about twelve hundred or thirteen hundred from Newark or LaGuardia or wherever else it's flying out of. And the travel agent who is in Spain said she could buy me that ticket for about three hundred.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, yeah. Yep.
Yep. We can meet for coffee and you can show me pictures.
No, I will definitely be taking pictures.
Um, so the March thirtieth workshop, we're gonna be covering community character, which has been what you guys have, uh, stressed. I stand as a swamp and we owe him. And I think I'm gonna go to Dyson's and get a gift certificate and hopefully he doesn't watch this, so he knows. And surprise him because I literally pounced in his office and was like, hi. And his desk was so.
Unless Jason Ting is really him.
But congratulations to John's daughter, because she got a promotion with the town. Um, so yeah, so we're gonna be doing that. And then April, we will not have any meetings because the sixth, we took off for Passover. And then I will be in Syracuse at this flood plain conference on the eighteenth of the twentieth. So no meetings in April, we'll be back at the beginning of May.
I will take it out of my.
All right, adjourn, unless you have anything else. Oh, no, we, we didn't say, so you can say.
Well, we just wanna thank.
Be it resolved, uh, we really appreciate his service and his passion for the town. Wish him the very best in his ongoing endeavors.
Absolutely. Uh, I do a letter and I have a certificate that I, so I will get that out and get.
Has he turned off his timing all like, or responded to his timing?
Maybe, I don't know. But I, they handed that. I don't have a number of that supervisor's office. If anyone knows anyone who's interested in volunteering for the town, I know it's a lot. I know it's overwhelming with the binders that I gave you guys. But, um, please let me know, because my list is dwindling. We're gonna stay seven more people aboard. New people.
Well, we do.
Okay.
We were talking about trying to make it bigger, not small.
Ideally, like eight people.
Well, I mean, at the moment, in the law, seven people and we don't have alternates.
Okay.
So.
But if we did have alternates in the future, it was awesome.
I don't remember that that is in the new code that Nan is writing.
There was talk about it, but I don't.
There was talk about it, but I didn't, I don't remember seeing it, but you know, I can look, I need to look at her, at her, um, you know, the new draft. She was answering the last few questions that I had. And I went through and I took all the chairman and made them chairs. And I took all the hens and made them they's. Unless it was something like you could say the supervisor will or the CEO will.
One question, did they come up with some good results from the meeting last night?
I said it was, it was really informative on Stun. It was really all about Stun, Stun types and, um, you know, things that aren't good. And then like the reminder that, all right, and we all forget that, you know, so much water is underground. And he did stress that, which I'm always like, I get excited when people say that because people don't. Um, it was good. It was, I'm gonna get in touch with Tim and see if I can get like maybe the PDF or something, so you guys can have it.
I hope they emphasized the protection of the buffers, that's.
They, someone at that point in the meeting did say, cause I, I sat in and listened via Zoom, um, that we have a big wetlands and water course, luckily in Woodstock. And I was like, that's right.
It was very tempting for people who own property along a creek. As close to the creek as they can, you know.
I get emails every day. Can I, can I take trees down in the wetland? Can I, can I build in the wetland? Do anything in the wetland? And can still not? Are you empty during the meeting?
Okay. And a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
John, good to see you. See you soon.